I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, January 22nd, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Principal Becky Littman is here with some central students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. We're certainly honored to be here tonight. As you know, this year, all four elementary schools in our district earned Apple Distinguished School recognition for using technology that inspires, imagine, and impacts teaching and learning. We're honored to join both High Crest and Willmet Junior High, who have already received this designation. And after receiving this award, all four elementary school technology teachers were invited to attend the Leadership Summit in Florida this past November. They were able to network with teachers from some of the most innovative schools in the world. Tonight, I brought my technology teacher, Lauren Wysocki, and third-grade teacher Lindsay Shea and her amazing students here to share not only what we learned, but they're going to show you an example of how we use innovation to enhance our curriculum.
So as Becky said, during the Apple Distinguished Schools Leadership Academy, I was able to collaborate with educators from around the world. It was really exciting to learn new ideas, and a couple of the ideas I was particularly interested in were how artificial intelligence and augmented reality are impacting education. One of the apps that I learned about was called AR Maker, and our students are going to tell you more about what I brought back and how we used it.
So Lauren presented at a staff meeting about the new things she learned about in Florida, and I thought AR Maker would be the perfect vehicle to showcase my students' learning from our narrative nonfiction unit, in particular, our work with biographies. So here now are my incredible third graders to share more about our work.
When studying biographies, we learned about important narrative nonfiction reading skills. We identified key character traits that helped our main character tackle adversity. My name is Avery.
Hi, my name is Quinn. We read on high alert for important experience that impacted our main character's success. Finally, we analyzed the impact that our main character had on our world.
Hi, my name is Mick. We read lots of biographies showcasing people who created change, accomplishments, amazing feats, and made a positive impact on our world.
Hi, my name is Scarlett. The biographies we read included studies of Mozart, Sally Ride, Walt Disney, Simone Biles, and William Wrigley.
Hi, my name is Anders. And important character traits we observed were courage, commitment, imagination, and kindness.
Hi, my name is Auster. For our final biography project, we selected two artifacts that represented our person. One artifact to represent a standout character trait, and the other artifact to represent a person's big accomplishment.
Hi, my name is Juliana, and during technology class, Ms. Wysocki showed us a new app called AR Maker. We found images of the artifacts we chose and were able to put them in the app in 3D. We wrote scripts to share our artifact character traits and record our presentations with AR Maker app.
Hi, my name is Ifan, and through the magic of AR, we were able to bring those artifacts to life during our presentations. It was so cool to see what augmented reality can do. Here's my presentation on Mozart.
Hi, my name is Ifan, and I study Mothra. An artifact that represents Mothra's character is a letter because he is perfect. He showed this trait by writing funny letters to his sister, father, and colleagues. One artifact that represents Mothra accomplishes this is a piano score. He accomplished this by writing music every second he had and not letting anything distract him. Mothra inhabited the world by writing 600 beautiful pieces of music, and he only wrote 155. Mothra is an amazing musician. Thank you for watching my presentation.
Hi, my name is Georgia. We love showcasing our learning to our classmates and families through our videos. This is my presentation on Walt Disney.
Hi, my name is Georgia, and I study Walt Disney. An artifact that represents Walt Disney's character is a film recorder because he's creative. He showed this tape when he made a bunch of interesting movies that are still popular today, and many kids around the world still love watching these movies, just the same as they did when they came out. Another artifact that represents Walt Disney's accomplishments is the Enchanted Castle. He accomplished this by making Disneyland and making companies, and he made many interesting places and discoveries that many people or cartoonists wouldn't make. Even after he died, the public still liked his ideas and continued and made Disney World, which has many awesome rides. Walt Disney impacted the world by making films that will never be forgotten. Walt Disney is an amazing cartoonist and artist. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
Hi, my name is Georgia, and I study Walt Disney. And that's it. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming to lead us in the pledge and for telling us all about your narrative nonfiction unit. I will tell you that when I was your age, biographies were my favorite. So I have a little present for all of you, and to let you know also, you're the best part of our meeting. And so as, I think you practiced going out that door, but what you're actually going to do is you're going to come up here, and I'm going to hand each of you and your teachers a little present, and you're going to go out this door here to meet your parents in the hall. All right. I would like to direct your attention to the beautiful artwork behind me. Linda Peritz's High Crest students made the artwork that's on display in the boardroom this month. The fifth graders' surrealistic self-portraits are an interesting exploration of identity and imagination. Sixth graders created acrylic pop art paintings using bold colors to make larger-than-life representations of snacks. The Japanese landscapes are a captivating blend of traditional and contemporary elements. Students studied ancient Japanese landscapes and created their own using origami paper and colored pencils. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Motion to approve the Board of Education minutes for the December 18th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
I seek a second.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes?
I'll make a note, there was one error that was recognized. That's what the Board has highlighted on their desk and was posted correctly with the agenda as well, so.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries. This is the first opportunity for the public to address the Board. Are there any community members who wish to speak at this time? If so, please come to the podium, state your community of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Kevin Robinson. I'm in Willmet, father of three children in the McKenzie School District. And I just wanted to follow up last month's meeting and provide a little more context on the public's opinion of KEEP. I think you're on the right track to reducing costs, but I implore you to keep going. $3,200 for public school kindergarten is $3,200 too many dollars for public school kindergarten. And I do know that I'm probably not going to have much of an impact with my statements here, but I do hope you think about the families that have already paid $6,400 for public school kindergarten and that have another child coming through. So are there, has there been any analysis done of how many families there are or what the budget shortfall would be if those parents did not have to pay a second time? I'm curious. I don't expect an answer, but I would love it if that's been thought about. It would be a nice thank you to your constituents that have paid $6,400 for public school kindergarten and are being charged another $3,200 for public school kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak at this time? Okay. We're moving on to Board reports. There were no, there was no Facility Development Committee meeting at our Committee of the Whole meeting, so we will move on to School Finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So at the, the School Finance Committee met on January 16th as part of the Committee of the Whole. During this meeting, the Board reviewed two topics. First topic was the KEEP 39 additional information and analysis provided by the administration. The Board reviewed and discussed the fee structure options for KEEP 39 fees for the 24-25 school year. Projections were presented for the following options. Option one was $6,460 per student fee. This was baseline assumption information and used as a reference point. Option two was 4,000, so for the fee to be set at $4,392, which would cover 100% of the estimated operational costs. Then option number three was presented, and that fee was $3,230 per student, which would cut the fee in half, and the Board's subsidy would be at 26.5%. For each option, the Board was presented with five-year projections. The projections provided outlooks for charging the fee for one more year and for charging the fee for three more years. The Board elected to set the fee at $1,3230 per student for next year and recommended implementation of full-day kindergarten in the 2025-2026 school year. The second item discussed was the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Calendar and Resolution. Mr. Boltmeier presented the timeline for the 2025 Budget Calendar and presented the resolution for review. And that was it.
Thank you. Strategy Committee, Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
So the Strategy Committee also met as part of the January 16th, 2024 Committee of the Whole. During its meeting, the Board received an update regarding Strategic Plan Goal Number Two, Action Step, Foundations Update. Several teachers presented their work at the elementary level as part of the Foundation's team. These individuals have participated in extensive training and have become school leaders, creating meaningful and sustainable change within their schools.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to Liaison Reports. The first is the Community Review Committee, or CRC. I went to that meeting. We met over Zoom on January 9th because of the snow, and the three different subgroups broke into breakout rooms. The first subgroup, they're all looking at the benefits of playful learning. The first subgroup looked at that, academic articles about that during their time, that meeting night. The second subgroup is looking at local school districts, and they identified other school districts that they could contact and are talking about possibly doing a survey to send out to them. And then the third subgroup is looking at what other schools across the country and internationally do, or how they use play in schools, and that's what they're researching, and they are on very good pace to be ready to present to us in May. And the next meeting is on February 13th. Ed Foundation, it looks like Mrs. Hart is going Wednesday night, okay? So we have not had one since our last meeting. And then the Willmet Village Intergovernmental Cooperation Working Group, Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Fabes, anything to report?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll just say that we've decided to meet a couple more times on the topic of mental health.
Okay.
And those meetings are being scheduled. There's no kind of definitive action plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, Mrs. Pathless.
There's also no update on that.
Moving on to Legislative Update, also Mrs. Pathless.
There is an update on that. Um, let's see. The Illinois Legislature was in session on January 16th. The House and Senate met for brief periods on January 16th and 17th, but not on the 18th. During those two days, a few resolutions were passed, but substantive work was being held over until they return on February 6th. And then the other item to note is in Cook County, you've probably heard that the Cook County Commissioners passed a Paid Leave Act resolution in December. That means that as of December 31st, 2023, employees in Cook County can earn at least one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours worked, and there is no exemption for schools in that resolution, which contradicts a Illinois state law, which does provide an exemption for schools. Nevertheless, we are, this district and other districts are working hard to figure out how this resolution may impact us and our staff, and we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. We're moving on to Information Items. Dr. Kremiscoli.
Thank you. Just a few to update. First of all, in terms of written communication, the Board received written communications regarding the KEEP 39 program and fees from the following individuals: Cory Lester, Kevin Robinson, excuse me, Rachel Gao, Kat Reyes Allen, Carrie Espastos, Lauren Doherty, Lauren Mellon, Katie Erickson, and Erin Lawler. In terms of administrative announcements from myself and our team, first of all, registration and planning for next school year is well underway. We remind everyone that registration for the upcoming school year will open on Wednesday, so in two days, and we're encouraging parents, especially of new kindergarteners, but really of all of our students, to enroll as quickly as possible. Staffing really depends on those enrollment numbers, and we like to get going on staffing just as quickly as we can. And so in many of our schools, we have some numbers that would cause us to open an additional section or to plan differently for some of those staff, those staffing plans for the upcoming school year. So please, if you could, families, complete that registration as soon as you can. Our kindergarten families will be able to register for KEEP 39 following this evening's meeting as well. So we're excited for that. And then our Electner Early Education Program, LEAP, which is our preschool program for three- and four-year-olds, will also open at this time. So all parents should be looking for communications and ready to start that registration this week, if at all possible. We also hosted the League of Women Voters Student Government Kickoff Event last week. We're thrilled to again be partnering with the Willmet League of Women Voters to support the League's student government program. We kicked off the program last Thursday with the annual kickoff event. Thank you to Amy and Bonnie for representing the Board at this event, and also to Cory and Katie and Nicole Ryan and our WJHS teachers and administrators for also supporting this event. This year, our students will partner with the Village Council of Willmet to explore issues and protocol for village government. So we're excited for their learning and their participation in this great program, and we're really grateful to the League of Women Voters for supporting the program and for partnering with us on it. A quick note regarding the State Maintenance Grant. District 39 received confirmation that we are approved for the $50,000 state maintenance grant related to the summer 2024 work at WJHS. So we're grateful for these additional funds to support this important work. Property Tax Assessment Appeals, District 39 received one PTAB notice. Information regarding that potential liability of these appeals has been prepared for the Board, and we have a Freedom of Information Act request. The district received and processed a commercial FOIA from Shari Reed of Smart Procure requesting all purchasing records from June 21st, 2023 to December 19th of 2023. And that concludes all of our administrative announcements. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions, comments? Okay, I think we're ready for Annual Business.
Okay, well, our first topic under Annual Business has already been summarized based on our recent discussions, but up for approval this evening is the 2024-2025 KEEP 39 fees. That action item will appear later on this evening's agenda, and the Board has discussed this item several times now, most in-depth at their November, December, and January Committee of the Whole meetings. The fee recommended for this evening is $3,230 per student, and that is half of what the fee was for this school year and prior years of the enrichment program. Additionally, the Board indicated that they wished to direct us to begin action planning so that we could implement full-day kindergarten in the following year, beginning in fall 2025, which is two years earlier than the state mandate. And so we're excited to begin that work at the conclusion of this evening's meeting with your approval of the fees and that direction. So thank you so much. Any discussion on that item?
Board members, any comments?
Well, the next item then was also discussed recently. It's the 2024-2025 School Calendar. The draft 24-25 School Calendar was presented to the Board at the December meeting. Since that meeting, the district has identified February 17th, 2025 as a potential emergency remote learning day if needed. So that date, if we called snow days prior to that date, we would notify everyone of the use of that day for an emergency day, and school would be held remotely for our students. That gives our teachers the opportunity to plan for the best types of learning on a remote day possible and gives our families notice that that day may be used. But because we know that people travel and there's all sorts of things that happen, we want to make sure that we name it as an emergency day and then give people proper notice if, in fact, we're going to use it. If this day is not used as an emergency remote learning day, there will be no school and observance of precedence day. So this is some flexibility we've built into our calendar for the last couple of years, and it gives, I think, everyone a pretty good peace of mind. We did successfully have a snow day in recent history and also brought our students back to school on Tuesday when many other schools weren't able to do so. And so I think we've had some success, and it certainly gives us some peace of mind when we're trying to make these really difficult decisions in the best interest of the health and safety of everyone. So thank you for that. There were no other changes made to the December draft calendar, and it's presented later this evening for approval.
Any questions on that? Board members, any questions?
Out of appreciation to the administrators and teacher leaders who helped to put that calendar together. It seems like it should be an easy task, and it is not. It's always very complicated with competing interests and needs and desires in the best interest of our students. So thanks to everyone who had a hand in that. You'll also see later on this evening's agenda for approval is the Summer Enrichment Program fees based on a review of the enrollment numbers from last year. We propose to continue to provide a discount for the review and reinforcement program while slightly increasing the fees for the enrichment classes. So review and reinforcement will be set at $75 per class, while enrichment will be $200 per class plus the cost of materials. Remember that review and reinforcement is a program that our students are referred to based on maybe some needs or some potential growth that could be accomplished over the summer. And so that's a program that we, again, hope to subsidize just a little bit. And then the other program is meant to be a break-even enrichment program. So thank you for your support of that, and again, those fees will be set later on this evening's agenda as well.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to Board Policy Review.
Yeah, so we have a plethora of policies up for review and a few with revisions for this month. This is the first reading of the Board of Education policies that are listed on the agenda at the end of October. Press released, press is that policy service through the Illinois Association of School Boards, they released an update on several policies. We, in particular Heather and our attorney, have spent a lot of time reviewing the press updates and present these policies for first reading tonight. For many of these policies, there's no recommended changes. However, we are reviewing them and noting that they've been reviewed, and so the date will be updated there. It just demonstrates that our policies are up to date when we get audited, but also gives us peace of mind that we continue to keep these updated to the greatest extent possible. For the policies that needed revision, most of the revisions were results of changes to the school code or state and federal regulations. There were some stylistic revisions made when warranted as well. I do know that one of the policies took a close look, I think it's Policy 2:220, and in that policy, it talks about how board meetings are set up and how we accept the vote of board members during the meeting. And one board member identified that there's a note about rotating the order of votes to be taken from board members, and there isn't a change to our policy, but we wanted to solidify what that means in practice for us. And so my recommendation is that at each meeting, we just rotate who is the first board member called to vote. It's always the Board President who is the last person to cast their vote. That's for a variety of procedural reasons, but we can rotate so that instead of it being Amy or Anne every time at the very beginning, we'll just rotate the order at each meeting, unless the Board wishes to proceed in some other way. And it's not a requirement. We did do some investigation. From what we can find, we did not find a rule about Robert's Rules of Order that says you have to. It's just a practice that many districts have in place. So that's kind of the easiest way that we thought to rotate. Open to suggestions, though.
Board members, thoughts?
I'm fine with dispensing of the order shuffle.
Oh, okay. You just want to go in the same order always.
Yeah, like.
So then I think we have to adjust the policy reads.
Right.
That you have to rotate.
And I'm just saying, what's?
Well, I think.
What do you think?
I mean, I understand the intent. So I've noticed this a few years and wondered, but there are some meetings, it's incredibly rare, when it, you know, comes down, if it's very split, and I can see where the policy comes from, that it doesn't always fall to in the same order. I don't have strong feelings about it, but because it is written in there, I flagged it, and I think it's a good solution. I don't have strong feelings either way, but if we don't do it, I think we should change the policy.
I like it. I mean, if it's manageable, I think you should do it.
As long as it's not every vote. Every vote would maybe become a little complicated, and I know many boards will run it that way, but every board sets up their meetings a little bit differently, so. So we'd be changing it every meeting? Every meeting. Right, or every month. Or we could do it every month. Right, so, yeah. I think whatever is easiest and most manageable.
Others?
Yes, Ms. Kim. I think that it could be an issue, not for this Board, but I mean, I could see a scenario where.
where that would be really helpful to have a rotating vote. And that's why I'm a little reluctant to get rid of it altogether.
I was thinking the same. It's good practice, I think, for the board to get into for whoever replaces us, would be my thought.
We will proceed, and we'll just rotate monthly, but thank you for the discussion and... Especially regarding other policies.
I just noted that in one of the policies, 2:120, it talks about board training in trauma-informed institutions. 2:120, if there's anything we needed to do. No, am I reading the wrong thing? 2:120, board... I read it online, so I don't have it underlined here, but it said that we had to have training in it, and I wasn't sure.
Yes, that is under number one of the mandatory training. And trauma-informed practices.
So, I don't know.
Yes, because I remember that this was when I was the legislative, it was like a new law, and you can see that there's that language that we're striking. That is incorporated into the trainings that are offered by the IASB. So when you join the board and when you participate in those trainings, they have incorporated those elements into their training. But we could certainly ask for additional training if that's an area that the board feels like they could benefit from. That might be some, you know, a retreat that we do. When you go to IASB, the annual convention, you could access those trainings. But it also could be something that we could ask our IASB rep if there's some maybe online tools and resources that you could make a difference.
As long as we're in compliance with what it says, I don't need to do anything different.
Or we could make Allison Papless do it.
I can leave the trauma.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess it looks like from the language that it is, when you start, when a new board member starts, it's like part of the training. So I think that that helps, and she started.
But it sounds like we are in compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I just had a quick question. I could tell from some of the pages, and I didn't do this as thoroughly as I should have, but like, for example, let's see, can't find it, but where I had, well, it's 2:200, that, I'm probably doing this wrong, anyways, that sometimes we're changing Board of Education to Board, kind of deliberately, but not across the board. But, you know, and so I was wondering, is that, it seems like a conscious choice. Are there times when?
So different boards have directed us differently. Previously, we were directed for Board of Education, and then most recently, I've heard a desire to be referred to as the Board. And so, yes, it is inconsistent.
I think I recall that conversation, and we decided to go with the Board and just make the updates as we noted them. And I did see, when I was reading the personnel policies, 5:200 and 5:210, a couple of places where it could be changed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were just going to update along the way to be consistent. I also just had a question on instruction, 6:... Before you move on, so what we'll do then before second reading is just do a close read of all of this, and anywhere where it says Board of Education, we'll change it to the Board.
Okay.
And in these instances, I think it reads the School Board, which we'll just change to the Board. Thank you. And instruction, you said? Instruction, 6:60. I was just curious, I see that, and reading, I mean, I'm sorry, and writing. I was struck, I was just curious if there's any background there. So Katie and I had a long conversation about this a few days ago, and language arts really encapsulates reading and writing, but the policy itself calls out reading specifically.
Right. And then when we refer to press, they identified language arts and writing as being redundant. And so language arts is deemed writing with reading. So it's kind of saying, writing, reading, and writing, you know, in the original language. And so they just chose to strike out writing. And so we're following press practice.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Not not to do writing.
I didn't think so, just thought we could clarify that.
Just going to see writing and writing now, saying.
Now called language arts.
That it comes up in the future.
Anyone else?
There's just one typo on 7:290, under 2A, and school support personnel, so support personnel.
Thank you. What else?
Next for this one, is this coming up again next month?
Yeah, this is first reading. So then any revisions will be made, and it will be brought back for second reading in February. You have another question, John?
We're ready to move on. This is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? If you could restate your name, that would be great, and you have one minute since you previously addressed the board.
Hi, my name's Kevin Robinson in Willmet, District 39. Regarding KEEP 39, I implore you to reduce the fee next year to zero, since I know that's not going to happen, and you'll still charge $3,200 for public school tuition. And think of it as a favor to us. Find a way to only charge families one time. Families like mine that have already paid $6,400 for public school kindergarten will not stand for being unjustly, doubly, or triply charged for being in the right place at the wrong time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, we are moving on with the consent agenda. The next order of the business, sorry, the next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated January 22, 2024. I move to approve the fiscal year 2024 student fees for the courses scheduled during the Summer Enrichment Program. These courses include enrichment classes and review and reinforcement. I move to approve the 2024-2025 School Calendar. I move to adopt the attached resolution establishing the School District 2025 Fiscal Year and direct the superintendent to prepare a tentative budget and approve the attached budget planning calendar as written. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between December 19, 2023 through January 22, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $226,297.51. O&M Fund, $39,492.9. Transportation, $109,844.04. Capital Projects, $366,208.63. Total All Funds, $741,842.27. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 19, 2023 and January 22, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $1,019,227.72. O&M Fund, $125,782.91. Debt Service, $907,371.25. Transportation, $231.74. Tort, $935. For a total, All Funds,
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Papless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. The A's have it, motions carry. I seek a motion to approve the 2024-2025 KEEP 39 fees.
I move to approve the KEEP 39 program fees for the 2024-2025 school year of $3,230 per student.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Papless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes? Erin Stone?
Yes. The A's have it, motion carries. We're moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good in welfare?
Mrs. Paling? I would just say, if you need a little boost of optimism, next year, you should sign up for the League of Women Voters students. Their civics program is so impressive. These students are so eager, and they're learning more about local government than most people know, than most adults know, right? I mean, we know how many people vote in our elections, and they were so curious and enthusiastic. It's great. I love that they have run this program for so many years.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who supports that event. It really means a lot.
That was the other thing, was it was so great to meet all these other local representatives from the library and the village and the park. It's just great.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hart?
Just a quick call out to all the district staff who allowed us to open school on Tuesday and get everyone in and out of school safely. And I know it was a tough decision. I think, as Carrie said, about Tuesday's decision, we were on an island, which is not comfortable, but I think our district did an incredible job. And a specific call out to the people who were outside greeting students, getting them in and out of cars, making sure that the lines were moving as smoothly as possible. They were out there in horrible conditions, but made it possible for the kids to get to school safely. So thank you all.
Thank you so much for that announcement.
Anyone else? Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
I just want to take a second. We did just vote to have all-day kindergarten start a year from September. And I know that how we did it doesn't make everybody happy. But if we take the long view, the high view, or whatever, we have just passed something that people of this community have wanted for a living. So I just want to say that's it.
Congratulations. Absolutely, absolutely. Huge accomplishment.
Anyone else?
I'll mention that I attended the Spelling Bee. Oh, my goodness gracious, those students, I don't know, were there maybe 30 students up there on the stage? Kelly Jackson was reading the words, which I was in awe of that in and of itself. But those words were exceptionally challenging. I was following along, and the students were following each other and cheering each other on, and it was just such an outstanding celebration of our students' hard work and willingness to strive even when things are really, really tough. And to see the other students cheering them on, they kind of rotated through, they'd spend maybe 10 or 15 minutes in there cheering on their friends. And when they'd come into the auditorium and see that their friends were still up on the stage, they were just thrilled for them. And to see them cheer them on even, you know, occasionally when a mistake was made, it was still such a celebration of their hard work and their efforts and their courage to be up there and doing this work, which was quite exceptional. So it was really fun. If anyone has the chance or the inspiration to just stop by next time the Spelling Bee is happening, really, it's something to see. It's really fun. So Kelly, thank you for reading all those really challenging words and the definitions and all the other things that you did to make that possible.
You saw on social media that there were 36 rounds. I was like, that is not something...
They went through the whole list, and then they had to go to like randomized words chosen from the Webster's Dictionary that the kids hadn't practiced before. Both were really, really hard. It was, I thought it was never going to end. We're never going to make a mistake. I don't know what happens. At some point, I was thinking Kelly was just going to have to say, all right, y'all win. That's it. You all get to go for it. So it was really well done.
Thanks for sharing that. Anyone else? Okay. May I seek, or sorry, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel in special education, individual student matters?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, individual students, special education, and I think that's it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Papless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries, and we are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 7:48 PM.